Good morning, welcome. It is now 10:10 a.m. on June 26, 2014. And this is the Department of Motor Vehicles Public Hearing on the Regulatory Proposal to Adopt Sections 16, 16.02, 16.04, 16.06, 16.08, 16.10, 16.12, and 16.14 in Chapter 1, Division 1, Article 2.0 of Title 13 of the California Code of Regulations relating to Driver's Licenses, which was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register on May 9, 2014 with Notice Number Z-2014-0429-12. I am Brian Suble, Acting Deputy Director and Chief Counsel at the Department of Motor Vehicles. I am also the department's contact person for this regulatory proposal, and I will be the chairperson at this hearing. With me onstage is Kristin Trippke, Chief of the Program and Policy Development Branch of the department's Licensing Operations Division. We are here today in the auditorium of the Caltrans Region 4 Building located at 111 Grand Avenue, Oakland, California, to accept comments on the regulatory proposal to establish the documents that will be accepted by the Department of Motor Vehicles to prove identity and California residency for the purpose of issuing driver's licenses to persons who are unable to submit satisfactory proof that their presence in the United States is authorized under federal law. This is a hearing on the regulatory text; this is not a town hall meeting or a workshop. Today, our focus is to receive comments on the regulations that have been proposed by the department. The hearing has been scheduled for 10 a.m. to no later than 4 p.m. However, we will conclude the hearing after we have received the last comment from those who have signed in to speak today, which means the hearing may conclude well before 4 o'clock. Under the rulemaking provisions of the California Administrative Procedures Act, this is the time and place set for the presentation of statements, arguments, and contentions orally or in writing for or against the Department of Motor Vehicles regulatory proposal. This is a quasi-legislative hearing in which the Department of Motor Vehicles carries out a rulemaking function delegated to it by the legislature. People making comments at this hearing will not be sworn, nor will we engage in extensive cross-examination. We will take under submission all written and oral statements submitted or made during this hearing. We will respond to those comments in writing in our final statement of reasons. Before we begin taking comments, I would like to lay out how we're going to proceed today. Again, this is a DMV rulemaking hearing, and it will be recorded and transcribed. The transcription, together with all exhibits and evidence presented during this hearing, will be made a part of our rulemaking record. The record of this hearing will be kept open until the close of business today. We are providing language assistance and headphones to hear translations. If you have received headphones, please make sure you return them before you exit the room today. Speakers receiving translation assistance must keep in mind that they have to allow the person assisting them time to translate their comments so that we can get them adequately reflected on our record. We have prepared a two-part exhibit, which is packaged together and was made available at the door as you entered. Part 1 is the express terms or the proposed regulation for this action, and Part 2 is the statement of reasons for this proposal. Copies of these documents were mailed to all interested parties who had requested rulemaking notices from the department and other interested parties who may be affected by the proposal. They were also made available on the department's Internet website. The scope of this hearing is limited to receiving comments, statements, and contentions on the proposed text of the regulations. However, there are few things outside of the scope of the hearing; consequently, I will not be taking comment on them. Those things are, first, the passage of AB 60. We've already seen quite a few comments by email that are related to the passage of AB 60, the law upon which this regulatory proposal is based. I want to be perfectly clear at the outset: This hearing is not about whether or not AB 60 should be implemented by the department. AB 60, which amended certain provisions of the California Vehicle Code, was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor last fall. It is now the law in this state. Long-standing California law, specifically Vehicle Code Section 1650 states that the Director of the Department of Motor Vehicles shall enforce provisions of the Vehicle Code relating to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Moreover, the California Constitution at Article 3, Section 3.5 says that an administrative agency, in this instance, the DMV, has no power to refuse to enforce a statute on the basis that it is unconstitutional unless an appellate court has determined the statute to be unconstitutional. Consequently, if the purpose of your comment today is to implore the department not to enforce the law that has been validly enacted, you're in the wrong venue. That ship has already sailed. We will not entertain or consider any comments about whether the department should implement the provisions of AB 60. Second, the markings on the driver's license card. The regulations do not address the marking on the card. Consequently, that is not a topic for comment today. Vehicle Code Section 12801.9, subsection D, says that the card shall include a recognizable feature on the front and bear the notice, "This card is issued as a driver's license for a motor vehicle. It does not establish eligibility for employment, voter registration, or public benefits." Subsection E of that section requires the DMV to modify the card to the extent necessary to satisfy the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. This is an issue that is addressed by the statute. DMV cannot enact a regulation that lessens or expands the scope of a statute. Consequently, discussions on the marking of the card are irrelevant to this proceeding. Third, costs. DMV does not control the fees imposed by other governmental entities. AB 60 enacted Vehicle Code Section 12801.9, which, among other things, requires these regulations to establish the documents acceptable for proving identity and procedures for verifying the authenticity of those documents. To the extent that we cannot verify documents, we have included something that no other state has: a secondary review process for people who do not have the type of documents that are specified in the regulations. Moreover, while AB 60 gave the department authority to specify an additional charge for the driver's licenses, we have determined we will only be charging the $33 fee that it currently costs to obtain a license. For these reasons, we will not be taking comments on the costs associated with obtaining source documents from another governmental agency. Fourth, the privacy of source documents. One thing that everyone must keep in mind: DMV is not the end of this process. Regulations proposed by any state agency must be reviewed and approved by the Office of Administrative Law. That approval process involves a determination by OAL that the proposed regulation does not amend, alter, enlarge, or impair the scope of authority conferred by the statute; that the regulation is consistent and not in conflict with or contradictory to existing law; that it is in clear terms; that it does not duplicate existing state or federal law; and that it is necessary to effectuate the purpose of the statute it is implementing. If OAL makes a determination that a proposed regulation does not meet any of those standards, it can disapprove the regulatory proposal, which means that the regulation would not go into effect. DMV's regulatory proposal today is about standards to accept documents to obtain a driver's license. It is not a proposal about establishing privacy protections; that is, outside of the authority conferred to DMV by the enabling statutes. Since anything that is beyond the authority granted by the statute is a known ground for disapproval, we will not be taking comments on privacy provisions. Those comments are not within the scope of the regulations proposed by the department. Lastly, we received well over 1,600 email comments and numerous comments on postcards and form letters that appear to have been scripted. We are here to hear specific comments about the proposed regulation text. And there are a lot of people who have signed in to speak. Consequently, I will not accept repetitive scripted comments that are not related to any specific provision of the text of the regulations. We simply do not have time to hear again and again the same scripted comment. The email letter, the email, letter, and postcard comments will be categorized, summarized, and where appropriate, we will respond to them as one. As you entered the room, you were offered the opportunity to sign in or register for this hearing. The sign-in sheet allows us to keep an orderly schedule for the persons who are present and wish to speak. I will be using the sign-in sheets to call people forward to comment. Please do not come forward until I have called your name and asked you to step forward. You may sign in at any time during this hearing, and we are going to keep an orderly hearing schedule today. Speakers will be given two minutes for their comments. We have a timer here that will show you how much time you have remaining. To be fair to everyone who wishes to speak today, I will enforce the two-minute time limit, and there will be no ceding of time to other speakers. I will only accept comments on this regulatory proposal, more specifically, the text of the regulations. If your comment does not address the proposals put forth by the department, I will ask you to return to your seat. I will not allow anyone to disrupt this proceeding. Anyone who becomes disruptive will be escorted from the room. As this is our second hearing, if you provided comments in Los Angeles on Tuesday, I will not accept comments from you today that are merely repetitive of the comments that you made on Tuesday. Now the rules are done. Assembly Bill 60 from 2013 amended California Vehicle Code Sections 1653.5, 12801, 12801.5, and added Sections 12801.9, 12801.10, and 12801.11, requiring the Department of Motor Vehicles to begin issuing original driver's licenses to people who cannot provide documentation establishing that their presence in the United States is authorized under federal law by January 1, 2015, or an earlier date if the DMV Director determines that the department is prepared to begin issuing those licenses. Vehicle Code Section 12801.9 requires the department's regulations to establish the documents that will be accepted by the department to prove identity and California residency, and it requires the department to establish procedures for verifying the authenticity of those documents. We are here today to obtain comments on the department's proposed regulations, which have been designed to ensure that people who apply for a license are who they say they are by establishing procedures to identify documents that have been produced with security features that prevent them from being counterfeited and can be verified either by resort to secondary documents or other sources of information, or directly with the governmental entity that issued the document. Your comments on specific provisions of these regulations are an important part of the process. We received comments both written and oral at the hearing on Tuesday that made suggestions to improve the regulations. Those comments are under consideration, and some will probably require us to make changes. Of course, if we make changes, we will issue a notice of that changed text. At this time, I'm going to begin calling speakers up based on the sign-in sheets that we've received. I'm going to call one speaker up to the stand, but I will also call the name of three additional people that will follow them next. If I do not call your name, do not come forward until I do so. I'm reading the names from the sign-in sheet based on the handwriting that's on the sheet, so if I mispronounce your name, please forgive. There are seats that are here to my right at the front, so the additional three people, please take one of those seats, and in what's your turn, I will call you forward. We have the two-minute timer. It's going to beep when your time is up, and that's when you will have to return to your seat. On the sign-in sheet, we had you to identify if you would need language assistance, so I will also, as you come up, if you have indicated that you need assistance, I will also indicate that. So at this time, I'm going to call up my first signed-in speaker, which would be Alex Cruz, A-L-E-X-C-R-U-Z. You would be at the microphone. Also come forward Victor Manuel Miranda, that's V-I-C-T-O-R-M-A-N-U-E-L-M-I-R-A-N-D-A. It looks like Connie C-O-N-N-Y Cortez C-O-R-T-E-Z. And Esther Melendez E-S-T-H-E-R-M-A-L-E-N-D-E-Z. And so at the microphone should be Alex Cruz.
Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Cruz, I'll be.
Estoy de acuerdo con lo que están diciendo sobre las licencias.
I'm in agreement with what you're saying about the licenses.
Me gustaron las palabras que han dicho.
I like the words you've spoken.
Sobre tener un documento para obtener una licencia.
Regarding a document to obtain a license.
Como un pasaporte o un ID.
Such as a passport or an ID.
No tengo muchos comentarios, pero seguimos adelante.
I don't have very many comments, but we are continuing to forge ahead.
Está muy bien lo que están explicando.
What you're explaining is very good.
Porque invitaron a muchas personas.
You've invited many people.
Creo que vamos a llegar a tener licencias todos.
And I believe we will all be able to get licenses.
Creo que estoy hablando unas palabras muy bien.
I believe I'm speaking good words.
Porque me han hecho muchas entrevistas en la televisión.
I've been interviewed on television many times.
Y hay que estar cuando lo invitan a las reuniones como ahora, hay que estar presente.
And when one is invited to meetings such as this one, one has to be present.
Para darse cuenta de todo lo que está pasando.
So that we can become aware of everything that's happening.
Yo creo que será que se me está acabando el tiempo.
I realize my time is running out.
Este... Está bien lo que están explicando sobre la licencia porque no hay que tener miedo a ir a registrarse para una licencia.
Your explanations about the licenses are good because one shouldn't be afraid to go get a license.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Next should be Victor Manuel Miranda, and he will need language assistance.
Sí, muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Yo estaba escuchando al señor Brian.
I was listening to Mr. Brian.
Y de parte de este grupo de personas que venimos de Proyecto Salud para Todos.
And on behalf of all of us for Proyecto Salud.
Salud para todos.
Proyectos and salud for everyone.
Y pues estaba bien claro como lo ha dicho aquí el señor.
As the gentleman just said, it was very clear.
Este que esta tarjeta, esta licencia, no va a ser para obtener beneficios, ¿verdad? Personales.
This license will not be something to get personal benefits.
Yo en lo personal, lo que tengo es un pasaporte, un DUI del Salvador, soy de la República de El Salvador.
What I'm from the Republic of El Salvador, and what I have is a passport.
Y todo lo que quisiera yo decirle aquí al señor Brian y a las señoritas.
What I would like to say to Mr. Brian and the ladies.
Es que cuando llegue este momento de dar estas tarjetas.
When the moment comes for you to issue the licenses.
Pues acepten lo más mínimo pues que se pueda de esa identidad personal con la que contamos.
Accept the minimum IDs that we have.
Para que así como estamos escuchándolos a ustedes, nosotros también los que vamos a recibir esa tarjeta.
As we listen to you, those of us that are going to receive.
Pues nos quede claro, ¿verdad?, que de por sí es un beneficio obtener la tarjeta para manejar.
To receive that license, then it should be that it is a benefit to get that license to drive.
Pero que se nos facilite esa forma de obtenerla.
But obtaining that license should be easy.
Como decía el señor Brian, en los documentos pues que están para probarse del todo.
As Mr. Brian said, the documents that we need to provide. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Connie Cortez, and I believe she needs language assistance.
Buenos días.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Connie Cortez.
My name is Connie Cortez.
Vivo en San Jose, California.
I live in San Jose, California.
Y vengo con la organización de Siren.
And I come with the Siren organization.
Hemos estado trabajando mucho para que esto se lograra.
We've been working very hard to make this come true.
Estamos muy felices porque finalmente vamos a poder entrar en un orden.
We are very happy because we're finally going to be able to follow a certain order.
El obtener licencias para manejar va a permitir que tengamos una mejor seguridad.
The process of allowing us to have licenses will make it easier for us to be more secure and safe.
También vamos a tener menos miedo.
We will also be less fearful.
Vamos a poder tener mejores carros.
We will be able to have better vehicles, better cars.
Que eso beneficia a toda la sociedad.
Which benefits the society entirely.
Y nosotros encantados de tener mejores carros, pero no queríamos tener buenos carros porque no los quitaban.
And we are thrilled to be able to have good cars, but we didn't want to have good cars before because they were being taken away from us.
Creo que con la buena voluntad de DMV.
With a goodwill of DMV.
Y la voluntad buena de nosotros.
And our goodwill.
En hacer las cosas bien.
As far as doing things the right way.
Va a traer mucha felicidad para nuestra familia.
That's going to bring a lot of happiness to our families.
Mucha seguridad.
A lot of safety, security, trust.
Y yo soy una abuela.
And I'm a grandmother.
De 66 años.
Sixty-six years old.
Que no quiero manejar.
And I don't want to drive.
Porque no tengo licencia.
Because I don't have a license.
Pero que en cuanto me sea permitido obtener esa licencia.
But as soon as I'm allowed to get that license.
Me van a ver en todas las carreteras.
You'll see me all over, every road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Melendez, I have it spelled M-A-L-E-N-D-E-Z, is that correct? All right, thank you.
Yes.
Buenos días, mi nombre es Esther Melendez.
Good morning, my name is Esther Melendez.
Soy voluntaria con Siren.
I'm a volunteer with Siren.
Gracias por la oportunidad de poder escuchar nuestros comentarios con respecto a los reglamentos para la AB 60.
Thank you for the opportunity of letting us, of being able to listen to our comments regarding the AB 60 rule.
Estoy agradecida por la AB 60.
I'm grateful for AB 60.
Nos dará la oportunidad a toda la comunidad de manejar legalmente con una licencia de manejar de California.
It will provide the opportunity to the entire community to drive legally with a California driver's license.
La licencia va a cambiar nuestras vidas a la que vamos a poder manejar con seguridad, así estar con confianza.
The license will change our lives because we will be able to drive with assurance, with safety, security, and be trustful.
Sin miedo.
And not fearful.
Sin miedo vamos a poder ir a nuestros trabajos, a dejarnos las niñas a la escuela, contar nuestras necesidades.
Without feeling afraid, we will be able to go to our jobs, to drop off our childrens at school, to go shopping for our daily needs.
También nos vamos a sentir más seguros sabiendo que en las calles serán más seguras con conductores aprobados.
We will also feel more sure because we will know that on the streets there will be drivers who will be approved as such.
Mientras que las regulaciones propuestas son un buen comienzo.
Although the regulations that have been proposed are a good beginning.
Le pido al DMV que haga más para asegurarse, de que el proceso sea más accesible.
I asked DMV to do a bit more in order to assure, or make sure, that the process is a bit more accessible.
Y seguro para todos.
And safe for everyone.
Que sean elegibles para aplicar y puedan hacerlo.
For everyone who's eligible to apply so that they are able to do so.
Sin embargo, mi mayor miedo.
However, my.
Es proponer que seamos discriminados.
Greatest fear is that we might be discriminated against by the police.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Our next speaker to the stand, I believe, is Regine Neptune. It looks like R-E-G-I-N-E-N-E-P-T-U-N-E. After that, please come forward and take a seat. Gabriela Galicia G-A-L-I-C-I-A. Barilio B-A-R-I-L-I-O-Villa V-I-L-L-A. And Juan Gabriel J-U-A-N-G-A-B-R-I-E-L. Ms. Neptune?
Good morning, my name is Regine Neptune. I am a volunteer with Siren in the Bay Area. I would like to thank the DMV Department for collaborating with the impacted community, organizations, and legislative leaders to provide this historic breakthrough in terms of public safety and privilege as a resident of the United States. However, there are issues that still are concerning in terms of law enforcement and making sure that individuals are not unfairly profiled by law enforcement. In addition, in your option four, we would like to make sure that the documents that are available are expanded and include such things as personal mail, library cards, birth certificates, insurance documents, and whatever is that the individual has that makes it easy for them to provide documentation and move the process along. So that is my comment.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Yes, it's Galicia, G-A-L-I-C-I-A.
Thank you.
Hi. So, good morning, everybody. My name is Gabriela Galicia. I represent Street Level Health Project, and we work with day laborers and low-wage workers here in the Oakland Fruitvale community. And I'm here just to talk about some of the barriers that we see in our community in terms of the documentation that you are asking for this driver's license. As we worked in the past few years on the Oakland Municipal ID, we saw some of the same barriers. For the day laborers, it's very hard for them to provide an address because a lot of them are living with either family members or other day laborers themselves, so they may not have an address or a personal document that shows that they live there. So some of the things that we came up with the Oakland ID was able to provide a personal letter or a letter from an organization, or a shelter, or other places that can vouch for the workers. The other barrier that we see with the identity part is that many of the day laborers may not have the documents or may not have money to receive a consulate card or passport or may have expired documents. So one of the things that the Oakland Municipal ID was able to do as well was able to accept expired documents, knowing that the difficulties, the cost to get a consulate card or even to get the consulate card for the day laborers is hard as well because some of them may not have the documentation since they are here by themselves in this country and are not. The other barrier that we see with the identity part is that many of the day laborers may not have the documents or may not have money to receive a consulate card or passport, or may have expired documents. So, one of the things that the Oakland Municipal ID was able to do as well was able to accept expired documents, knowing that the difficulties of the cost to get a consulate card or even to get the consulate card for the day laborers is hard as well because some of them may not have the documentation since they, they are here by themselves in this country and are not able to get the documents from their own country to get them here. Or may have lost them along the way, either because they've been robbed or have lost them for other reasons. So, those are some of the barriers that we still see. And so, some of the suggestions that I've talked to when I do outreach with the day laborers is also being able to provide a cellphone bill because that is a lot of, a lot of the day laborers do have a cellphone bill and can, that actually has their name and their address. Or some of them also have the organization ID that we provide with them that has their name, ID, name, birthday, and their photo. So, those are some of the suggestions that I have.
I just wanna ask you one question.
Yes.
Is Oakland a city that has like a municipal ID program?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so some, will some of the laborers have something like that?
A couple of them will, yes.
Okay, that's an excellent suggestion, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, this should be, it looks like Barilio Villa, no? Juan Gabriel, please come forward.
Hi, so good morning, my name is Juan Gabriel, I'm part of UCA, Youth National Community Action, I'm a youth organizer there. So, one of the things that I'm very particular about, some of the documents that you guys are asking for are some national IDs. I'm from Guatemala, I mentioned this before in the last hearing that we, or workshop that we had. But, I'm from Guatemala and I know that you're asking for a national ID, but a national ID, getting a national ID from the Guatemalan consulate is very hard because the Guatemalan consulate asks us for some documentation that we need and those documents require us to go back to our home country to get them. And we can't do that with the, with the notary, what is it, a notary public or because we need to be present in the country to get those documents. So, it's kinda hard to get a national ID. I know that before we used to be able to get a cédula de vestidad, which is what Guatemala used to use before, they required a national ID. And I know that some of those documents are expired, but they, they still have the full name, the fingerprints, the add, the address where we used to live, all that kinda stuff. So, it serves as a part of the identification for Guatemalan people. It's also getting very hard for us to get a Guatemalan passport. I don't have a Guatemalan passport right now because I lost it during a trip. Now, I can't go back and get another one because I needed some other documents and which required me to go back to my country, so.
And, and that's exactly why we have the secondary review process and so we hope that that process will be open enough to allow you to, you know, submit documents to us and then we'd be able to verify identity. So, thank you for your comments. And I'm gonna do a really bad job on this, so please forgive me. It looks like, the last name is Ventura, V-E-N-T-U-R-A. The first name is Zenedia, it looks like Z-N-C-U-D-A. Please come forward. And when you get to the microphone, please spell your first and last names so that we get it accurately reflected on the record.
Good morning, my name is Zenaida Ventura, Z-E-N-A-I-D-A, Ventura, V-E-N-T-U-R-A. I'm from, oh, I came from Fresno today to share some thoughts about the requirements that you are, that I is gonna need for the driver's license. Myself, I will be beneficent, I will be, I will be able to get a driver's license if this happens. The DMV is near my house, they're gonna open a beautiful building July 1st and I'm just waiting. But the other thing is that sometimes we don't have the documentation to prove that we are living in Fresno, let's say. Because sometimes everything is under my husband's name and I don't have enough proof of evidence, or yeah, evidence that I'm living there. So, I would like to, on the request, or the, where they're asking about the proof of residence, if we can just prove with the birth certificate or my children, or two letters from a relative or some advertisements that sometimes they send to the mail. So, it is why I'm here to share my concerns that I, I would like to see that because sometimes we live with another relative or we don't have enough evidence that we're living in, let's say, in Fresno.
And, and we've put in the regulations, for example, for a spouse, a domestic partner, a child, they would be able to rely on, for example, if the utility bill is in the spouse or the head of the household's name, we have procedures that will go ahead and accept that.
And also, I would like to add about the matricula and the passport. Sometimes it's too expensive for us to, to get those, like the, the passport is, it depends on how many years do you need it for and it depends, it's a cost for that. And sometimes we're, we're not able to get that because sometimes it needs like two proof of identifications and sometimes we can't get that from our towns or countries where we came from.
Okay, and then, in that situation, we would be able to rely on our secondary review process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
At the microphone, I would like to call up, looks like Leno, L-E-N, L-E-O-N-E-L, Flores, F-L-O-R-E-S. And then, in the seats in the front, let's also have Sean Meerkamper, M-E-E-R-K-A-M-P-E-R. Jeremy Barus, J-E-R-E-M-Y-B-A-R-O-U-S-S-E. And, oh geez, Antonio, it looks like W-R-E-I-N-A, should be the other person that comes forward. At the microphone, Leonel Flores.
Ah, yes, Leonel Flores from Fresno, from UNIR and my first coalition, thanks ACLU to invite me. Well, I think that most of the documents are very important for Mexicans, you know, but I would need to include other, other nationality who had very, very serious problems to bring this kind of IDs or certificates of birth, et cetera. And also residency, like Zenaida said, you know, for example, we stayed in Avenal this, last Saturday. Many of them, they don't have like residency, they are mostly undocumented and they don't have a bill. Because, for example, Avenal City, they need a valid ID to, to provide a bill for water services, other, other services. So, will be so hard for them to obtain a residency. I think that other thing about identity, the electoral credential, I think it's important, but mostly Mexicans, we don't have available to that. For example, I have 25 years here in the United States. And, and electoral credential is a good ID, ID is included, but not as primary. About the residency identification, I think is, is good documents that you ask it. But we're concerned about the privacy and the discretion of DMV to share this information with other entities, especially with UCIS or ICE or Department of Homeland Security. I want to let you know to DMV in the State of California, don't be intimidated by Homeland Security, go and do your job. So, we ask you to not permit discrimination, not only with local enforcement, but also from the DMV workers. I hope not. It's why I'm, I'm asking you, on the last time, to have some place where we can submit our opinion when the service is provided by the DMV workers. So, be accessible and safety for everyone, thank you.
Can you identify, what, what organization are you with again?
Well, my organization is UNIR, but it's my first coalition, but ACLU invited me, we're from Fresno.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna remind people that, as I mentioned in my opening comments, there isn't anything in the regulations that deal with privacy and security and things like that and providing documents to law enforcement. Those provisions are already in other parts of statutes and they're not part of our regulatory proposal today. So, just please keep in mind, if that's what your comment's on, that's not specific to the regulations, that's not what we're about here today. So, our next speaker is Sean Meerkamper, M-E-E-R-K-A-M-P-E-R.
Good morning, I'm here on behalf of the Transgender Law Center, which is the largest organization in the United States advocating for the rights of trans and gender non-conforming people. As you may know, transgender people face outrageous rates of discrimination and violence in virtually every area of public life and this is especially true for transgender immigrants. These problems are compounded when people are unable to access identification that accurately reflects their gender identity. And so, we're here today to ask that as part of these regulations, you first of all, ensure that current California law regarding the change of name and gender marker on driver's licenses applies to licenses that are issued under AB-60. And additionally, as part of the rollout of these regulations, we ask that the DMV provide training so that DMV employees understand, excuse me, that the names, the gender markers, and photographs on previously issued identification may not match the current name and gender identity of transgender applicants. California has been a real national leader in removing barriers to gender-appropriate identification and we ask that you not leave out our friends who are trans and undocumented. And finally, I'd like to echo the other concerns people have voiced today regarding the accessibility of these new licenses as well as concerns around police profiling. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to point out that under AB-60, all other provisions of law that are respect to issuing of licenses apply, that we are hiring additional, over a thousand staff members, opening additional facilities, and all of our employees are undergoing specified training, sensitivity, and, and how to deal with the new licensed applicants that will be coming in. So, that's already part of the process. Thank you. This should be, Jeremy, can you pronounce and spell your last name, please?
Yes, Barus, B-A-R-O-U-S-S-E.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jeremy Barus and I'm the community organizer with Services, Immigrant Rights and Education Network, also known as Siren in San Jose, California. We're an immigrant rights nonprofit that covers all of Santa Clara County. I organize a group in the Seven Trees neighborhood in San Jose, you've heard from some of our leaders a little earlier. I'd like to submit a, a official letter on behalf of our leaders who could not be here today. The Seven Trees leaders have been very active over the last several years in advocating for driver's licenses for undocumented immigrants in California and have spent the last several months educating the community on the law and how to prepare for when the law goes into effect. As an advocacy group, we humbly ask that the Department of Motor Vehicles expand its list of documents by adding worker's center IDs and baptismal certificates. As we feel these two documents will be easy to obtain for members of our community. In addition, we ask that the DMV ensure that applicants can provide identity by submitting either a current foreign passport or a consular ID card and not require applicants to submit both documents. So, in my closing time, Siren, we've partnered with a lot of community members, we've done some forums with the DMV, we've gone out to San Mateo, Santa Clara, Monterey Counties and done presentations on how to prepare and educated with the background of the bill. And a lot of these issues have been echoed with obtaining documents, either the consular ID card or a foreign passport would be sufficient, not requiring both. As well as law enforcement and being able to drive without any discrimination. So, being able to drive and, and not have, with confidence and not have to be discriminated against. So, if law enforcement can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I'm gonna point out, we've designed a process that we think should, should allow people to get the license without having to rely on the assistance of some third party that may try to charge them a fee. And the reason why I'm bringing that up now is because it's organizations like Siren that are, are advocating on behalf of people who would be applying for licenses and we would implore people, if you get someone who wants to charge you a fee in order to help you walk through the process, that's information that you could get for free off of our website. There's organizations like Siren that are there to help, they're working with us to make sure that you can get through the process and get a license. And so, if you're not standing in a DMV office with a person that's, you know, that's there with DMV and it's got on a badge that shows you that they're a DMV employee, anyone that may try to identify themselves as such or try to charge you a fee in order to be able to go through the application process, you might wanna look a little askance at that. And there's a lot of organizations that are out there to help you. And so, what I'm, I'm encouraging you, yes, there are fees in order to get the license, but if there's someone who wants you to pay them money to help you get a license, please, you know, think twice about it and maybe talk to some of these great organizations like Siren. Because it is something that you should not have to pay some third party to help you do. So, with that, I am now gonna call up Antonio. And Antonio, if you can say and spell your last name for you, for me, and Antonio is gonna need some language assistance.
Antonio, por favor, diga su nombre y apellido y deletré su apellido, por favor.
Si, buenos días, mi nombre es Antonio Urbina, A-N-T-O-N-I-A-U-R-B-I-N-A.
My name is Antonio Urbina, A-N-T-O-N-I-A-Urbina, U-R-B-I-N-A.
Thank you.
Gracias.
I pertenezco a la organización Siren.
I belong to Siren.
Vengo de Milpitas, California.
And I'm here from Milpitas, California.
Pues quiero agradecer al DMV por hacer comentarios acerca de la licencia del, licencia del DMV.
I'm here to thank DMV for the comments you're, you came here to make about the licenses.
Sobre el reglamento del AB-60.
Regarding the regulations for AB-60.
Más que todo estoy agradecido por el AB-60.
But most of all, I'm thankful for AB-60.
Ya que me dará la oportunidad de legalmente obtener una licencia para conducir en California.
Since it will legally give me the ability to be able to get a license to drive in California.
Y poder obtener una licencia de conducir y cambiará pues mi vida totalmente.
Obtaining a driver's license will completely change my life.
Con esta licencia podemos manejar para ir al trabajo, llevar a los niños a la escuela, si hay alguna emergencia en el hospital, poderlos llevar también.
We, with this license, will also be able to drive ourselves to work, to drive the kids to school, and if there is an emergency, we can drive.
Estoy contento y agradecido por esta oportunidad que nos, Estados Unidos, bueno, el Estado de California nos está proporcionando para obtener una licencia.
I'm happy and I'm thankful that the United States, well, California, is giving us to get a license.
Y gracias al DMV, gracias a las organizaciones como Siren y otras organizaciones.
Thank you to DMV and thank you for the organizations, the organizations such as Siren.
Por proporcionar este tiempo de que nosotros podamos obtener todo esto.
For allowing us this time to be able to obtain everything we need.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Next up at the microphone, Jose Camey, it looks like K-A-M-E-Y. At the three seats in front should be Sandy Valenciano. Barulo Gonzalez, B-R-A-U-L-O-G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z. And Yasmin Segura, S-E-G-U-R-A. And can we have him spell his last name for us, please?
Por favor, puede deletear su nombre, su apellido, apellido.
K-A-M-E-Y.
K-A-M-E-Y.
Buenos días, yo vivo en el condado de Fresno desde 1978.
Good morning, I've lived in the county of Fresno since 1978.
Y cada vez que voy a Los Ángeles, a veces miro algunas cosas que no son igual cuando maneja uno en Fresno.
Sometimes when I go to Los Angeles, I see some of the things that are not quite the same as when one drives in Fresno.
Por ejemplo, en 1979 miré el, el diamante al entrar a las autopistas y aquí en Fresno no había en ese tiempo.
For example, in 1979, in the freeways, I saw the Diamond Lane and back then, it didn't exist in Fresno. didn't exist in Fresno.
Hace apenas un par de semanas regresé a Los Angeles y miré unas líneas express, y miré unas líneas que dicen que hasta pagan por entrar a esa línea, que es también express.
A few weeks ago, I went to Los Angeles, and I noticed that they had some, they no longer had the Diamond Lane, and they had the express lines, and they even paid for it.
Voy a esto. En el condado, que es muy grande en Fresno, es una zona rural, y las preguntas del DMV deberían de ser simples también para la zona, para que nuestra gente pueda pasar la prueba de manejo.
And where I'm headed to that is that in Fresno, Fresno is a rural community, and the questions that DMV makes should be simpler questions.
Y la otra que miro que pasa mucho en las carreteras es la velocidad. Yo recuerdo, creo que estaba en 55 cuando yo saqué mi primer licencia, la máxima.
Something, something else that I noticed is, back when I got my license, the speed limit was 55, and currently...
Y ahora yo pienso que ya deberían de aumentar el límite de 70, 75, o 80, porque yo miro que la gente maneja muy recio. Yo, agradecidamente tengo la licencia con un buen récord, pero me cuido demasiado. Muchas gracias.
I see that now it's 70, but I believe that it should be up to 75 or 80 miles per hour. I have a good driver record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gracias.[692.12][692.12](APPLAUSE).
Sandy, and could you pronounce and spell your last name for us, please?
Yeah, my name is Sandy Valenciano. It's V-A-L-E-N-C-I-A-N-O, and I'm with California Immigrant Youth Justice Alliance, but I'm also here representing North Bay Immigrant Youth Union, Napa Valley Dream Team, and Sacramento Immigration Alliance. One of the documents in option three, proving one's identity section allows one to use their birth certificate for identification purposes. I would like to request the DMV to allow this document to be translated by a certified notary, and not just the consulate of origin. This would allow the document to be attainable by a broader audience, as there is much difficulty getting to a consulate. This also requires a day of labor, which can go towards the actual cost of the driver's license and other documents needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[747.72][747.72](APPLAUSE).
Good, good morning. My name is Braulio Gonzalez. It's B-R-A-U-L-I-O Gonzalez. I am with Youth United for Community Action in Espalato, but I'm also representing San Mateo County Coalition for Immigrant Rights. And so, I'm here, you know, just to give you a little, you know, Yucca, we do a lot of leadership development, working with young folks in Espalato, Mallard Park, and Redwood City, but we also do community organizing.
Can you start, she's, she's trying to keep up.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So, in order to, you know, in order to educate the community of Espalato, we hosted numerous workshops just to educate the community about what was going on with AB-60. There was a lot of questions and a lot of confusion, and so, in, you know, in the presentations, we heard from community members that they're, you know, they're really happy about AB-60 coming to, you know, to life, but there's, you know, and the, most of the documents that are listed in the regulations is something that they can, you know, they can present. But there were a couple of suggestions made. One of the things that we heard was that it's going to, so, one of the options, you guys asked for two documents to be presented. We know that for the community of Espalato, a passport or Mexican matricular card are something that they can obtain, but it costs a, you know, a tremendous amount of money. I sat down with one of the young people last, or just yesterday, he has four adults who are eligible for a driver's license in his family, and so for four, four of them, it's going to cost them over $600 as a family to obtain both the matricular card and the passport, and to apply for the driver's license. So the, you know, what we suggest is to accept only one, or, you know, the passport is the better one. The second option that we, you know, that we are, or the recommendation that we're making is to, is for the DMV to consider to accept two or three expired documents. A lot of the community members have had California driver's licenses before, and so we're asking that you guys accept that as a, you know, as proof of identification. And the last, lastly, we, you know, one of the things that we want to clarify is, you know, we want more clarity on what the secondary review process is going to be. There's a lot of folks that have a lot of questions. We don't know what that looks like, so we're asking for more clarity. And then, last thing, one of the last things that I want to do is, there's a lot of individual, a large, a large number of folks that weren't able to be here today, and so part of like, it's important to get them, you know, to get them, their voices heard, especially if we want to integrate the immigrant community into our, into our society. And so, what I want to submit today is 55 postcards of folks that weren't able to be here, that, you know, that wanted their voice to be heard.
Yeah, if you could, there's a young lady that was taking the sign-in sheets at the back of the room, and anyone that had something that they wanted to submit to us, if you can just give it to the young lady that's at the table outside, that's doing the sign-in sheets, we'll, we'll take that, and it will be part of our record for today.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.[917.66][917.66](APPLAUSE). Can you spell your last name for us, please?
Segura, S-E-G-U-R-A.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jasmine Segura, and I'm here on behalf of Educators for Fair Consideration, E4FC. We're an organization that empowers undocumented young people, and I'm here to speak primarily mostly on our experience with the implementation of DACA, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, and we were facing very similar challenges as we were trying to educate the community as to the documents that were going to be used for, for this process. So, I'm here to speak primarily mostly on option two. So, a lot of our community, there's more than one family member that will be applying for a driver's license, and that issuing or obtaining documentation from our consulates has been a very challenging process as well, that a lot of our community, for example, we have a family from Bolivia that would have to travel all the way to Los Angeles to be able to facilitate that process. Getting also both a passport and a national ID, as has already been mentioned, has been very costly in the past, that for a family of four, we are looking at a cost of more than $600 to obtain both documentation. So, the federal government, as it was implementing DACA, that they were providing an option of, of providing either a passport or a national ID. So, we really encourage the DMV to also look into that. And the other thing is, in terms of option one, on the Mexican federal electoral card, a lot of our community does have those documentations, but they have been out of their countries for a very long time. I can speak personally for, for my parents, that are extremely excited about applying for this driver's license come January 1st, that they do have their electoral card, but they have not been in their country for over 20 years. So, obviously, that, that identification card is expired, and that they would have to go back to their country to do that. So I would encourage the DMV to change so that it also includes expired identification cards. So, thank you.
Thank you.[1061.88][1061.88](APPLAUSE). Okay, it looks like Cynthia Nunes, Sheila Byers, and Jose Quesada. It's Nunes, I believe it's N-U-N-E-Z. Byers is B-Y-A-R-S, and Quesada, Q-U-E-Z-A-D-A. At the microphone should be Cynthia, and if you can spell your last name for me, because I probably got it wrong.
Okay. So it's Cynthia, C-I-N-T-H-Y-A, Munoz, M-U, and with the tilde, O-Z.
Thank you.
So, my name is Cynthia Munoz, and I work at Causa Justo Justas, it's a community organization based out of San Francisco and Oakland. We primarily work with Latino immigrants and African-American folks around housing issues and immigration, or immigrant rights issues. And today, I wanted to say, and similar to what Hasmeen mentioned, the issue of the option one, the Mexican federal electoral card, it's really hard for people to have an actual valid one, especially if they've been in the country for, you know, more than three or five years, as those are expired, and so we want to request that you consider actually accepting expired documents, given that that may be the only option that some of our folks have. And around also the issue of what other, I know, I read the regulations, and there are concerns about other states not meeting the requirements that you feel like you need. And in thinking about what this driver's license is for, and for the purpose of driving, and people having that right that they haven't had for many years, it seems that considering other options around accepting a worker ID center driver's licenses from another state seems very reasonable, and we want to continue to ask for that. And then, primarily, we were here today because our, the biggest concern that has come up is around racial profiling and the safety of people's information, and I understand it's been very clear several times and has been raised that we're not here to talk about that, and so we wanted to ask for time and space to talk about that soon, or, or figure out where that space will be. And then, lastly, around accessibility of these hearings, it's in the morning, or people can't miss work. That will also be a challenge around getting the documents and getting the, the actual driver's license. The one thing that I would ask to consider for future hearings on the regulations, as they get more edited, if they do, and hopefully they will, is that you give two minutes for people who need to, that need translation for their actual testament, testimony, and also two minutes for translation. As currently, myself, as I speak English, I'm getting two full minutes. Our members who only speak Spanish and need a translator to assist them in communicating with you are getting one minute. Thank you.
Thank you.[1239.82][1239.82](APPLAUSE). This is the formal process for adopting regulations, and as such, it's held during the, the business hours of the state, because this is, as I mentioned earlier, this is not a workshop, it's not a town hall meeting, and as such, as part of the formal regulatory process, it is held during the normal work, business hours of the state. So we appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Is there any comments you have on the time?
No.
Request?
Our next speaker is Jose, because, oh, I'm sorry, Sheila Byers, I'm sorry.
Good morning. My name is Sheila Byers, and I am representing SEIU Local 1000, and I'm also a DMV 20-year employee. Although DMV employees are used to change, we deal with people from everywhere. We want you guys to realize that it's not going to be a problem with any employee coming in to get a license. This is our job, this is what we do. A lot of these hearings, I'm hearing people say, well, we want DMV people to be nice, we want them to be respectful. Overall, that's us. So we support this, and we will have no problem treating everyone with dignity and respect.
Thank you.[1312.97][1312.97](APPLAUSE). Jose?
My name is Jose Quesada, and I'm doing some community outreach in the Sacramento region. And I would like to ask that we, the DMV require either a, sorry, I'd like to ask that we require either a passport or a consular ID, as most of the people I've talked to have a hard time obtaining both. And also, if it does get to the secondary review process, that we accept something from the school that names a person as a parent, it'll make it a lot easier, as most people who require the license need it to get their kids to school. And I know you mentioned we shouldn't talk about this, but I feel wrong not to, but privacy has become a main concern, pretty much the first thing that everyone I've talked to talks about. With deportation numbers where they're at, the people have a bit of a distrust for the federal government when it comes to immigration. So I would also like to voice my opinion to get a, a hearing on that matter, as it is important.
That's, that's not within the scope of the statute, and so, this is the last hearing we're going to have on these regulations. Again, there are privacy provisions already in the law. There are requirements under the federal immigration law that deals with the submission of documents to law enforcement agencies, which we have no authority to change. And so, that's not a subject that DMV can control, and so we do have no plans for having any hearings on that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.[1414.62][1414.62](MUSIC)
Okay. Ariana Gil, A-R-I-A-N-A-G-I-L, please come forward. Also come forward Maria Cortez, C-O-R-T-E-Z, and Angel Garcia, A-N-G-E-L, G-A-R-C-I-A.
Good morning. Okay, we'll just do this. Good morning, my name is Ariana Gil. I'm an organizer with Mujeres Unidas y Activas, and we're a community organization that serves immigrant Latina women. Many of our members are survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, and because of that, often, one of the services that we provide is trying to get them housing in shelters, which would be their primary residence for, until they're able to find safe residence. So we wanted to, to make sure that in these regulations, we're asking that, that letters from shelters are accepted as proof of residency. I think that's going to be really, really important to helping these, helping these women get back on their feet and be able to, to drive and whatnot. And the other thing that we wanted to recommend or request is that you also accept worker center IDs and community center IDs. Our members, oftentimes, that's the only ID that they have, is, is the ID that they're able to get from our organizations. So we have peer counselors that get IDs showing, you know, well, we're working on getting those anyway, some of them have them, that you would accept those worker center and community center IDs as forms of identification.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1545.82][1545.82](APPLAUSE).
She will need language assistance, please?
Buenos días, mi nombre es Maria Cortez.
Good morning, my name is Maria Cortez.
Y yo vengo de la organización Mujeres Unidas.
And I come from the organization Mujeres Unidas.
Yo estoy muy agradecida con ustedes por las licencias que les quieren dar a nosotros los inmigrantes.
I'm very grateful to you all for the licenses that you want to give us immigrants.
Pero también se me hace muy difícil todos los requisitos que ustedes están pidiendo, ya que algunos de nosotros no tenemos los medios económicos para poder conseguir todos.
But it also seems to me very difficult for many of us to fulfill the requirements that you have, because for many of us, we don't have the financial means to get all the documentation that's been required.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1612.82][1612.82](APPLAUSE). I'm sorry, you want to step forward, and tell us what your name is, please?
Yeah, my name is Angel Garcia, and I come from Fresno, and I represent Centro Nacional de la Paz, Arroyo Indígena Oaxacaño, which is a binational center for the development of indigenous communities. So, organization focuses primarily on indigenous folks from Mexico, but not exclusively. But, you know, I just want to point out three things. I come from Fresno, but I also speak on behalf of Tulare County. And one of the things, the first thing is, you know, a lot of our folks are involved in circular migration, meaning they're in seas, they're seasonal workers, so during season, they stay in Fresno, but they can go as far as Washington, the state of Washington, you know, for, to work. So, we've got to take that into consideration, and we would like you guys to take that into consideration. The other thing is that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we live in rural California, you know, so that's one of the things that, you know, needs to be also, I believe, taken into consideration when, you know, requiring the documentation to obtain these, these licenses. And lastly, I would like to also, you know, speak of, like, collaborating more with organizations, because, you know, a lot of times, these organizations are, you know, the entry points to these communities, and not only that, but these organizations serve as, you know, support for these communities that perhaps might not go to these government agencies, you know? So, that's also something that, you know, I would like to stress on. Thank you.
At, we have been doing outreach efforts, and so if you ask the young lady, again, at the sign-in table, we, she can give you the business card of our department representative that has been organizing some of our outreach efforts. You can get in contact with her, and we can come speak to your organization.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay? Thank you.[1740.82][1740.82](APPLAUSE). Our next speaker is Maria Luisa Figueroa, F-I-G-U-E-R-O-A. Also come forward Martha Romero, R-O-M-E-R-O, and Priya Murthy, M-U-R-T-H-Y. And at the microphone should be Maria Luisa Figueroa, and she will need language assistance?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I want to put it down. Okay, my name is Maria Figueroa. Do you want me to spell it?
Yes, please.
It's M-A-R-E-A. Luisa is L-U-E-S-A. Figueroa is F-I-G-U-E-R-O-A. Maria Luisa Figueroa. I came from Mujeres Unidas y Activas, from Noclan, San Francisco. And this are Mujeres, a woman, unites, active. I'm a member for Mujeres. And I'm going to tell my story about my son-in-law. He's been here for many, many years with my daughter. They are citizens. And it was very hard to go get his matrícula in San Francisco. Because this is the woman, they come from Chiapas, they don't have the car. Sometime when they stay more than five years, all the documents expired. And it's very hard to do it, because right now, it's no job. You know, it's no job for all the people, for immigrants. And it's very hard for my daughter and for him. When he went yesterday, he can get, he can get the matrícula. It's very hard now for the driving license, all the people, for the documents. I want you to, I want you to, to, to please consideration all those immigrants. And to have, if they have a document expired, please, at least one, or maybe any, something, you know, they have to show you. I want you guys to be very consideration, all the, all the immigrants' documents. And I say it's very hard for, for them. Thank you so much. I want you guys to support all the immigrants issue, because I want, I want to depart, because I was before, you know, and I've been, I've been working very hard, where Mujeres, to be, help all these immigrants. Because this is so important, because the United States, I think we are more Mexican, more immigrants in United States. We need to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Marta Romero?
Buenos dias. Yo soy Marta Romero. Soy de México.
Good morning. I'm Marta Romero. I'm from Mexico.
Yo soy también una de las personas inmigrantes, pertenezco al grupo de Mujeres Unidas y Activas.
I'm also one of the immigrant individuals, and I belong to the group Mujeres Activas y Unidas.
Estamos agradecidas por este nuevo documento que quieren ofrecernos.
We are grateful for this new document that you wish to offer to us.
Pero necesitamos que sí tomen en cuenta que somos personas de bajo recursos.
But we need for you all to take into consideration the fact that we are people with limited resources.
Y a veces no es difícil tener tantos documentos como piden. Sería magnífico.
And sometimes it's very difficult for us to get as many documents as being required.
Que hicieran válidos, pues lugares de indicación de centros comunicarios.
It would be wonderful if some valid documents could be those coming from community centers.
Así como lugares de shelter, que algunos personas necesitamos.
Including shelter places where some of us individuals are located at.
Y también, pues, que no tuviera ese tipo de, un poco de discriminación en ese señalamiento en las...
And also for there, not, not to be that little bit of discrimination in that indication appearing in the licenses.
Sería magnífico eso. Tomen en cuenta, pues que somos, todos los seres somos iguales y venimos a superarnos.
And that would be wonderful. Please take into account that we're all human beings, and we're here to try to get ahead.
Es nuestra única meta al venir a este país. Muchas gracias.
That is our only goal when we come to this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Priya Murthy?
Good morning. Priya, P-R-I-Y-A, Murthy, M-U-R-T-H-Y.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Priya Murthy with Siren. We appreciate the opportunity to share comments from the community through this hearing. I would like to share some concerns and recommendations on behalf of some of our leaders who spoke earlier. But unfortunately, we're not able to complete their remarks due to the time limit. As someone had mentioned earlier during the comments, we do encourage that during these hearings, that there's additional time that is provided for oral comments for those who need translation assistance. For our leaders, their biggest concern is around the potential for discrimination by law enforcement, because they want to make sure that they can drive without fear. Their recommendation is to ensure that language in the regulations reiterates the anti-discrimination protections found within the legislative findings of AB 60. This will reassure them that AB 60 licenses will be treated the same as other licenses by law enforcement. I also did want to raise two additional concerns that we've been hearing, and we would love to hear more from the DMV about them. The first is around law enforcement and immigration enforcement accessing DMV records as it relates to AB 60 licenses. While we understand privacy is not the topic of conversation today, we do want to make sure that your agency is aware that this is a major concern. And the second is questions around the investigations process as part of the secondary review if individuals are submitting items under option number four. In particular, we've heard from community members that they would appreciate clear information about what the process is like as they go through the secondary review process, whether they will have to surrender their documents if they're going through secondary review, and what types of questions may be asked of those who are going through the interview process, and who is actually, if there's any criteria for who is actually subject to the interview process if they go through the investigations and secondary review stage. I will stop there. Thank you so much for your time.
In my introductory comments, I pointed out the standards for review of a regulation and approval by the Office of Administrative Law. I heard your comment when you mentioned that you would want us to, in the regulations, reiterate the provisions that are already in law. The standards for review of a regulation calls for OAL to make a determination whether or not the language that is being proposed duplicates an existing state or federal law. If it does, that is a ground for disapproval of the regulation, which would mean it would not go into effect. So to the extent you want us to include something that's already in the statute, we would stray away from that, because we do want to see these regulations approved and go into effect. So we appreciate your comment.
Understand. At the very least, I would appreciate that there's more information provided to the community about what those standards are, regardless of where it comes from, so that individuals are assured of what the privacy protections in place are. Thank you.
And I'm sure an organization like yours would be able to point them to the statutes. Thank you. Next, it looks like Joe DeHurst, D-E-H-U-R-S-T. I apologize if I can't read your writing. And also, taking a seat is, and here's the bad thing, when people don't write legibly, I kill their names. M-I-R-E-C-E-N-A. I can't even read the last name. And after that would be Jose Pineda, P-I-N-E-D-A. So if those people would come forward. Is your, are you Joe?
Yeah, Jose.
Okay, can you spell your full name for me, please?
That's Jose, J-O-S-E, Pineda, P-I-N-E-D-A.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm here today with Yuka from East Palo Alto. I'm here today with Yuka from East Palo Alto. And I'm here today to tell you guys about maybe putting into consideration on using less documents for the requirements that we need for the license. And, and I think that what you guys doing about giving us licenses is like a big deal, because I live with both parents, and my, my dad lost his, his job. And then he goes out to like look for jobs and stuff, and then most jobs, they, they require a driver's license. And he can't, like, he's not, he doesn't have one, so he like, so far, he's not allowed to work. Well, he, he could work, but like, he can't work in like good jobs, I guess. And, and yeah, I'm just here today to ask you guys to put it into consideration in using less documents, like less documents in the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert H-E-A-G-Y?
Robert H-E-A-G-Y. I mean, I don't know exactly what I'm, except for the last part of the Assembly Bill.
Do you have any comments on the regulations that we proposed?
The last part where it says, you know, that if this is deemed unconstitutional?
That's in the Constitution.
You know, that, but I mean, if this is taken to court and deemed unconstitutional the entire, then what does DMV do if they've issued things?
If it's, if it gets taken to court and deemed unconstitutional, we'll follow the decision of the court.
But I mean, well...
But until then, we have an obligation to enforce the statute. So do you have some comments that you want to make on the regulations?
What is DMV going to do if?
And, and this is a hearing about the proposed regulations, do you have some comments on the regulations?
I guess not. I mean...
Okay, thank you.
All right.
There are two people who signed in after Jose. I cannot read your names. It looks like an M-I-A-E-R-E-N-A. And there was a person before that, a Joe. I cannot read your last name. If I haven't called your name, otherwise, if you want to come forward now and take a seat there so we can go ahead and have you give your testimony, if not, I'm just going to pass you. Come forward.
Good morning.
And can you say and spell your full name, please?
Absolutely. Joel Dewitt, J-O-E-L-D-E-W-I-T-T. My brother, who's a lawyer for the last 30 years, has similar handwriting. I think it's required for doctors to have that anyways. Reason why I came today is, first of all, I'd like to say that, regrettably, since I was laid off, I have the time to come here today. But I'm glad I'm here nevertheless. The statements I did want to make was, number one, that it does seem like this, what did you call it again? It wasn't a law, it was a...
Assembly Bill?
Okay, I thought you said administrative. If we had an intelligent, excuse me, correct, enforced and intelligent immigration policy, we wouldn't be here. This is unnecessary. It's kind of like a stopgap measure. And it seems, at best, ineffective and kind of a legal finagling at times. But I understand the concept behind it, that you have people that have risked a lot to come here. On the other hand, I emphasize with the people that I know that have legally immigrated to this country, that have gone through the process. Anyone who's had a marriage where he's trying to get someone into this country has gone through hell. A friend of mine, I'm a real estate agent, and a friend of mine had to give genetic evidence that his children was his for them to get citizenship. And let's see, what else? I've known people specifically from the Philippines that are very good friends of mine. My, my other half is Filipino, that it's very difficult to come here legally. I want there to be justice for everyone, but legal finagling does create a lot of problems that are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a break for just a couple of seconds. There were a couple people earlier, in recognition of the comments about having to do the translation, that may not have finished their comment. If they want to come forward, what I would have them do is only come up three at a time. Take the chairs. We'll have one person at a time at the microphone. You just have to re-say your name for me. So there were, and if the people who pointed that out to me, if you can identify the folks, have them come forward now so that they can finish their comment that they didn't have a sufficient amount of time to do. And those are specifically people who were using language assistance, so. Anyone that wants to do that? No? Okay, I'm going to call forward Mr. Ted Burnett, and that's B-U-R-N-E-T-T?
Good afternoon. Is it afternoon? Yeah. My name is Ted Burnett, and I'm the statewide DMV coordinator for SEIU Local 1000 that represents 6,414 DMV workers from the Oregon border to the Mexican border. And I want to thank everyone for coming, and just wanted to let you know that it's been a very tedious process working with the department and the community groups across the state to make sure that we get this right. So it's a partnership between the community, the DMV, and the union to make sure that the community is served. And some of the things that we've learned from the town hall meetings and talking to various groups is that there is opportunity for everyone to be part of the process and practice our democracy in the state of California. We also want to let you know that the department is hiring over 1,000 workers. The notice for the coastal area went out like three weeks ago. If you know one, someone that meets the criteria, please have them go to spb.ca.gov to fill out the application. We continue to want the department to mirror what the community looks like. Also, in any word of advice I can give you, make sure that you go to, or have people continue to go to the various organizations that are having people study for the test. That's very important. Please study for the test. And also, we want to make sure that when you do, it does take effect January 1st, 2015. Our employees will be there, ready to greet you, and thank you for your time.
Well, Mr. Burnett was our last signed-in speaker. And so without anyone else having signed in and wishing to come forward, I'm going to explain what our next steps would be, and then we'll conclude the hearing. Many of you may not be familiar with the formal rulemaking process, and I would like to take a few minutes to briefly outline that process. As I mentioned earlier, the rulemaking process is governed by the provisions of the Administrative Procedures Act, the APA, which can be found in the California Government Code. After we conclude our public hearing here today, we will review and summarize all of the written and oral comments that we've received. If those comments lead to a revision of the proposal, and we've received quite a few excellent suggestions, so that means that we probably will have to have a revision. As required by the APA, we would put out an additional 15-day notice and receive written comments on that. We would not have a hearing on that. Once we get everything finalized, we summarize and respond to the comments in our final statements of reasons. We modify the text of the regulation. We package that all together, along with the transcripts of both hearings, the one that was in Los Angeles on Tuesday, this hearing today, and copies of all of the written comments that we received. That'll be fun, because we've got about 1,600 emails. And they will be part of our rulemaking file that would be submitted to the Office of Administrative Law for review and approval. Once OAL has reviewed that and made sure that we've complied with the standards for adopting a regulation, they would issue an approval. We would hope to have that done, you know, and it has to be done, by January 1. If the department is equipped to begin accepting licenses at an earlier period of time, there's a possibility for a determination to be made by the director. And so if we, if we get everything done, have our facilities ready, have the additional staff hired, have all of the necessary additional training that needs... staff hired, have all of the necessary additional training that needs to come, we may implement at a date earlier than January 1. But at the latest, it would be January 1, 2015. So with that, I'm going to conclude the hearing. Again, one thing that I want to stress, and I mentioned it earlier, is that the process is designed such that you do not have to rely on a third party to help you, to assist you to apply. So to the extent, there's always people out there that will do this. There are people that will try to charge folks to help them through the process. We don't think that's necessary. We hope that we're providing sufficient information on our website. We will do additional town hall meetings to help explain to people what the process is and how to go through it. Again, if there's some third party that wants to charge folks in order to help them with the application process that may be representing themselves as a representative of DMV, again, I'll say, if you're not standing in a DMV office looking at somebody who has a badge that looks something like this, please be skeptical and make sure that you are not giving money to someone that does not represent your best interests. And so we're going to have to rely on you policing that yourselves. But again, I encourage you, this is a process that's designed. The only fee that the state will be charging you is $33 for the license. I understand there's fees for other source documents. There's not a lot we can do about that, but we want to make sure, take advantage of the good community organizations. Several have spoken here today. We will do outreach with them, but we want to make sure that our community, it's our community, it's all of our community, that we are protected and that we are not taken advantage of. And so again, I want to stress that, I'm repeating myself, but you shouldn't have to pay extra fees outside of the fees that it takes to get the license itself and maybe your secondary documents. People who'll try to charge you to help you through the process, it's not designed for that. And so we appreciate all of the comments that we've received today. If you have written comments that you haven't had a chance to give us, we will take them at the table. That was at the back on the way in. We have, again, our email address that's on the notice, and so we will be taking comments at that address up until close of business today, which for us is 5:00 PM. Thank you. For those of you who traveled here today, we appreciate that. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and close our hearing. Thank you.